Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Dear God, we thank you for this day and this season that we're in, moments of joy and jubilation, and the reason for the season. As we come together to take care of the business of our city, we pray to God that you guide and lead us as only you can, that we will stand on those principles and things that we can sleep with and rest well at night about. Bless us in that effort. Bless all that we shall do, as we do it to the best of our ability, with no political things in mind but the welfare of all the people. Bless us and sanctify these truths in our hearts, for we pray in the awesome and mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council present.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. 13-510, Adoption of a Resolution by Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia in Support of Senator L. Louise Lucas's Senate Bill 19, Presented to the 2014 General Assembly. Electronic roll call, and I have registered speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si, and she's followed by Mr. Steve Carroll.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farm section of Churchland. Principles of Liberty 2: A free people cannot survive under Republican Constitution unless they remain virtuous and morally strong. Principles of Liberty 3: The most promising method of securing a virtuous and morally stable people is to elect virtuous leaders. Principle of Liberty 4: Without religion, the government of a free people cannot be maintained. Our Constitution created by our founding fathers was a monumental task, structuring a government with all the power put into the hands of the people. Part of the guardian spirit of the founding fathers was their political spectrum or political frame of reference. It was a yardstick for the measuring of the political power in any particular system of government. If the founding fathers had used the modern yardstick of communism on the left and fascism on the right, they never would have found the balance center which they were seeking. Today, we have undertaken to measure various issues in terms of political parties instead of political power. No doubt, the American founding fathers would have considered this modern measuring stick most objectionable, even meaningless. Measuring people and issues in terms of political parties has turned out to be deceptive and totally misleading. This is because the platforms or position of political parties are often superficial and structured on shifting sand. The platform of political party of one generation can hardly be recognized by the next. In this generation, how are we, the citizens of Portsmouth, recognizing our political party members? Are people being measured by their political party affiliation rather than the issues facing us? On Tuesday, December the 17th, there were two political parties working together at the recounting of the votes for the Commonwealth Attorney General's office. The process involved one person assigned from the Democratic Party and one assigned from the Republican Party in the three different areas of responsibility: Electoral Board Representatives, official counters, and official observers. There were six tables. Each table consisted of two official counters and two official observers. There were two Electoral Board Representatives, one Democrat and one Republican, walking around helping those who needed help in figuring out the process to count votes. There was numerous staff from the Registars Office and the Circuit Court to help as well. People worked together on a common goal, obtaining the correct number of votes cast for their respective party candidates. When people work together, there's always a clue about relationships between the leader and his people. The chairman of the two respected city committees are elected by the members of their party. I witnessed the chairman of the City Committee of the Democratic Party's attentiveness to the needs of his volunteers. He talked with them on occasions throughout the day. At lunchtime, he invited his observers to lunch at a local café. At the official counters and Electoral Board officials were provided lunch at the court. The chairman of the City Committee of the Republican Party did the opposite. He was an observer at one of the tables. He sat reading a book, looking at his electronic device, and another time, sat in the jewelry box reading his book. He and his Democratic observer partner did not engage with official counters as they worked. He didn't speak to me throughout the time I worked, nor did he invite his observers to eat lunch together. Is this an example of how some of our elected leaders behave once they get elected? How come it is all about him or her? Are the citizens doing the same thing to each other, and that's why they elect leaders like this? Look at this gambling issue. I heard it is to mitigate the tolls. When I was talking to the representative in the garage after the public hearing, he reported that we need money for infrastructures. Where did that come from? Is that the old bait-and-switch routine that elected officials do once they get what they want? The citizens' freedoms is not looked upon as a visible solution to anything. It's about money, power, and control. Our representatives are applying a superficial answer to the issues facing Portsmouth by issuing more laws, setting up more bureaus, harassing the people with more regulators, and charging the people for these services by continually adding to their burden of taxes. The law to implement a casino is a deception. It is a method to set up an aristocrat of a ruling city council. Under this new law, SB 19, the people are going to be placed into a lower-class group. Thanks for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Mr. Carroll?
Following Mr. Carroll will be Mr. William Conley.
Steve Kill, Steve Carroll, 3112 River Ridge Drive. Today's paper, Six Hotels Within Cab or Walking Distance of Where This Likely Casino and Probably Senator Lucas's Hotel Is Going to Go. You've got things under control, you can't even control this. Heroin, guns under the mattresses, $4,500 a day. What do you think's going to happen in that casino? Try $45,000 a day. Legiscan, a nonprofit legislation-tracking organization in the state of Virginia. The next lie. We're not going to get 90% of the money going to tolls. A good part of that money is going to go to support the construction and maintenance of the Dominion Boulevard Bridge and Roadway Improvement Project. Thank you. We remember the gag order that was imposed on non-agenda speakers earlier this year, which almost every member of this City Council approved initially and backpedaled on later on down the road. I wonder who was behind that? Our good Senator Lucas, you know, the same one that sued us for $100 million because she couldn't get her sleazy terms for her hotel deal? How quickly we forget. And now, she and her supporters want to poison our communities and our civic reputation with prostitution, drugs, gambling addiction, larceny, misery, lewd and lascivious conduct. And if Lucas and this City Council had spent more time fighting the tolls instead of trying to get the courthouse in this building off the waterfront, maybe we wouldn't be fighting the ERC. Senator Lucas's daughter is a member of the Economic Development Authority. What a coincidence. Councilman Meeks, the dog and pony show that you engaged in with Senator Lucas last night was as obvious as the nose on my face. Padded questions and padded answers. Oh, I'm glad you asked that question. Good gosh. April of last year, I presented to the City Council the true cost of what ERC was going to cost us, $28 billion. Two weeks later, it finally comes out in the paper that ERC is going to get $20 to $22 billion of that money. I wonder who's going to get the rest of it? The state of Virginia? When I presented this information to you, not a single one of you asked me a single question. You didn't ask me where I got the information from. You didn't challenge the figures. You sat there silent. And you sat there silent for a reason, and I'm going to come to that in just a minute. I'm going to read this article verbatim, and I quote, "The Virginia Department of Transportation held numerous public meetings, briefings, and presentations on the project in Norfolk and Portsmouth in 2009. There were five independent review panel meetings, all open and advertised to the public. Meetings were held in Norfolk and Portsmouth City Council chambers. Both city managers were voting members of the panel that approved the project with tolls at $2.86." I'm not going to beat around the bush any longer. Is this article and this quote and end quote from Sean Connaughton in the paper true or not true? Yes or no? Yes or no? I want an answer. And if you give me a straight answer, I'm going to end my comments right now. If I don't get a straight answer, you're going to hear more. Is it true or not true? You've heard this before. I corroborated that with the minutes from the -- forget it. Is it true or not? Because if you're not going to answer the question, not answering the question gives me my answer. You knew about the tolls in advance. You were not blindsided, were you?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Conley?
Mr. Conley is followed by Mr. Mark Godallicutrovsky.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Mr. Rowan, your staff. Good evening to you. I was here last night, and I came -- I didn't have an opinion on one way or the other last night, and I came to be educated, and I was. The only problem I had, I was a little upset about the way the council ended last night's meeting. I thought that tonight's meeting was unnecessary. But nevertheless, what I wanted to talk to you about is I live here on Water Street, on the street, and my property value on Water Street has plummeted over 50%. And some of my residents who have passed and their families selling their property have lost $150,000 in property value. And on the other end of Water Street sits the Holiday Inn site, which is probably, in the opinion of many, the finest site on the East Coast. The working harbor would be a wonderful place for a large condominium. However, it sits empty and vacant, and why is that? And I felt Senator Lucas last night was trying to tell us why. That we no longer can count on the government to supply more money into the Defense Department. Therefore, we're going to lose employment in the area. I think we're all aware of that. What I wanted to put all together is that she said that we needed an economic engine, something to spare the economy in the city of Portsmouth. And I have to agree with her. If the city of Portsmouth is to survive and not become another Detroit, we need to provide employment for the people who live here. And those jobs would be most important. Now, last night, I sat here and I listened to both sides, and those people who are against it, I would welcome tonight for them to come forward and tell me, what is your plan? What do you have that will spare the economy? I'm not in favor of a big casino. I'm not really sure of that. But I would show a vote for it's going to supply jobs into this city, and I thank you for having the foresight to try and do something about it. I would like for those who oppose it to tell me what their plan is. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conley.
Mr. Godallicutrovsky. And he's followed by our final speaker, Mr. David Kennedy Jr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I want to clarify some comments that were made by people supporting the casino proposition. They cited the casino gambling in Hampton Roads study that was prepared by the staff of the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. They left out some very significant aspects of that report. It's fairly easy to read. If you go to the hrtpo.org website and search for casino gambling, it will pull it up. It's 13 slides. The conclusion first. There were four bullet points on the conclusion. One, gaming has a long tradition and is acceptable to a strong majority of adults. Two, casino gambling in Hampton Roads is likely to generate approximately $375 million in gross gaming receipts, which could yield an annual tax revenue of $113 million. They focused on those two aspects of it implicitly, if not explicitly. What they made no mention of are the last two bullet points. Number three, although there are numerous casino studies, there is little consensus as to the social and economic impacts of gaming. Bullet point four, further study of the impacts of casino gaming on Hampton Roads is recommended. Clarification on the structure of gaming in the Commonwealth would allow for a more refined analysis. Now, before page or slide 13, there's slide 12, and it has a list of social impacts associated with gambling. Senator Lucas, in her presentation, cited a source, Cordish Companies, which have made proposals and done some work for the city of Norfolk in the past. When you go to their website, as I said last night, you find that management of gambling establishments is one of the things they list early on in their corporate profile. Okay, this slide is drawn from information found in the New Hampshire Gaming -- sorry, the New Hampshire Gaming Study Commission in 2010. And the social impacts listed include crime, business and employment costs, bankruptcy, mental illness, suicide, social services, regulatory costs, family costs, abused dollars, social connections that are broken, and political costs. And they come with a bearer of the costs and the description of the costs. Bankruptcy, for example, as a result of gambling debts. Mental illness, gambling is associated with mental illness, such as depression and anxiety. And it goes on. It's worth your time to read it. So, when the Cordish Company suggested that the societal costs of gambling are overstated, here's a state commission that did a study and indicates that actually, they're not overstated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker, Mr. David Kennedy Jr.
Good evening and happy holiday to all of you.
Thank you. Same to you, sir.
I didn't know about this until I went home and was -- happened to turn on the television. And there was two ladies from here. I don't know whether it was either of these two ladies, but I did hear one of them state making a statement that I made quite some years ago. I was the first entertainer to go to Waterside, and I am supposedly the oldest, not the oldest, but more than anyone else. Why I'm telling you this is because when Jillian moved out, when things began to get bad, right then, I kept talking about getting a casino where the game room was. It's already there. Just recently, I wrote to City Council and the mayor, and in great big printed letters, I said, "Stop the buses at the tunnel, bridge tunnel, so the money will stay in the casinos here rather than going to Atlantic City and Ocean City." And I have verbally and written many letters promoting this same thing. And when the ladies said those words on television tonight, not about stopping the buses, but having the people from Carolina and here come here to a casino to spend the money instead of going up there. Now, I didn't write a speech out like these other people did. I was just going by my thought of from that television statement tonight the lady made, which like I said, is something I made a long time ago. Also, I'm a big, big fan of entertainment, naturally. I've been in show business for 83 years. I'll be 87 in January the 7th. So, I back any kind of entertainment there. And as far as crime, blah, 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 this and the other, that I've even heard tonight, they can check these other cities and compare what they say has been happening in those cities that would be caused by gambling in the casinos. And at one time, I think I remember even they were discussing having a ship here and go on the outskirts of the limit and have it. But that kind of blew out the way, something. But nevertheless, I am very much in agreement with having the casinos come here to keep this money in this area. Not long ago, Dolly Parton tried to go to Virginia Beach with her show, and a statement was made by a person on the council, "No, we don't want those rebel flags here. That's against us." So, she goes to Myrtle Beach, and Myrtle Beach now today is Las Vegas of the East Coast, as far as I'm concerned. Because all -- after she got there, all these other shows went there. They don't -- I don't think they have a casino, but nevertheless, the entertainment is what brings the money to the cities. I would like to make one more statement, if you don't mind, when I heard somebody else talking about this tunnel business. I can't understand President Eisenhower was the one that passed the law for these interstates, '95, '64, so forth. These tunnels, especially down -- a Midtown Tunnel, is connected with the interstate. 264 is an interstate, and I cannot understand why we, the people of this area, have got to pay for that thing being built. Looks like to me the government, since it is the interstate system, should be building that thing. That's a little plug that I wanted to get in on my own. But I appreciate you listening to me. And if you need some entertainment, I just did two shows for Operation Smiles over in Newport News at the University just this past Sunday. So, I'm still going strong. Give me a call.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Members of council, there are no additional speakers this evening. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I often think it's important for the public to understand why we do or don't support an issue. And so, I'd kind of like to tell you why I'm going to support this resolution. Everybody understands what a positive economic impact building a casino could be to the city. Tax revenue, jobs, spin-off businesses, it's easy to understand. What keeps people, I think, in general, from wanting to support this is our social issues, fear of crime, fear of gambling addiction, those kinds of issues. And I kind of look at history to predict what the future might be. And I look at prohibition. And when the state of Virginia made alcohol legal and controlled it, it made it better. It made it better for the consumer, and it made money for the Commonwealth. Same thing happened with horse racing. It was safer for the animals. The Commonwealth made income. Same thing happened with the Virginia Lottery. Instead of going to a bookie, you bought lottery tickets. The Commonwealth makes money. So, in the good political bumper sticker style, I would tell you, this is sort of like saying, if the state can legalize it and then control it and then tax it, everybody wins. And the citizens of Portsmouth will win because of the tax revenue that will spill off back into many things. Maybe it's reducing real estate tax rates, maybe it's paying for additional services, maybe it's buying down other rates. But I think this is a step in a good direction for the city. It's a tool in the toolbox for our state legislators. Whether it'll pass in Richmond, I don't know. But I'm going to try to make that happen.
Thank you. Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Simmons just reminded me of something. I'm voting against this. And she mentioned about legalizing liquor. We've had so many tragic deaths because of liquor, because of people looking out for pleasure things more than for the welfare of moral and social things that would occur. And we have to be very concerned about the aftermath of things. And we cannot hide our head in the sand and act like it does not exist. There are a lot -- there are more things from social issues that will result with casino and gambling in the Commonwealth, especially in our city, than we could handle. The lottery was supposed to have been the thing that would cure all things, and it backfired on us. And now, here we are at this stage. I think our city is better than that. I think we can come up with more creative ideas. If you ask me what some of those ideas are, I can't tell you, but I know that there is a way and there's a will. And I can also know that prayer changes things as well. I don't believe that there is a preacher in the Tidewater area. The majority of them would stand against this. I'm not speaking for them, but I believe that they would. Because it is a temptuous thing that will lure people into a den of poverty, bankruptcy, looting, wickedness, murder, crime, holeups, more gridlock. I think we need to think better than what we're thinking. And I think we need to start doing that now, because I really don't believe it's going to pass through the legislature as well. And so, if that's our hope for our city to succeed, then we are a city most miserable. I think we need to be more wiser, wiser rather, than that. And I think we are a city that's better than that. So, I'm voting against it, not voting against Senator Lucas, but voting against legalizing gambling and gaming.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Madam Clerk? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I think any of us that are gonna vote one way or the other probably should offer an explanation. I think Councilwoman Simmons made a good case, and I think Bishop Edmonds made an excellent case for the opposition. I think we're fooling ourselves if we think casino won't be without problems. It will. I guarantee you, most of the restaurants that are open late at night, some of us call them bars, some taverns, they're not without problems. But, you know, just because some people may abuse things doesn't mean the majority should have to suffer for what a few do wrong. You know, people abuse sugar and become obese. Many more of us can eat a candy bar or a donut and be okay with it. So just because a few people become obese from sweets doesn't mean that we still have bakeries. We do. Credit cards. Credit cards are a convenience for a lot of folks nowadays. Some people abuse them. They can't handle the freedom of using plastic. And those people sometimes need help, and there are agencies that help those people get control of the urge to use the plastic. But we haven't banned credit cards. And the list goes on and on. The sun... the sun is good for you. A lot of people can go out in the sun, and fewer people get sunburned. Even a smaller segment has to deal with skin cancer. But it doesn't mean that we live in the darkness and refuse to go outside. So the list goes on and on. I don't think we can look at a casino and say, just because some people abuse it, we shouldn't have one. I think in this case, it would bring revenue to the city. And let's not fool ourselves. Tolls are coming. You know, it's been a gallant fight, but I don't think the Supreme Court is gonna reverse its decision. I don't think that at all. Hope it does, but don't think it will. Once those tolls go into effect, that's gonna be a game changer for Portsmouth, and a game changer in the wrong direction. So I think we need to look outside of the box. I think we need development on the waterfront. We have a courthouse that was built during the Nixon era of urban renewal. That's why it's there. Back then, it was, I guess, a good decision. Now it's sitting there vacant, not generating any tax revenue. In fact, it's becoming a blighting influence on the city. So if we can get outside money to come in here and build something that will attract people, make Portsmouth a destination city, I think we would be foolish not to take advantage of it. I have faith in our men and women in blue that they're not gonna let anything that comes to Portsmouth get out of hand as far as bringing additional crime to the city. I think they can handle that job, and I think they're more than up to the job of doing that. So I don't think we can run away from those opportunities if someone wants to invest in the city. Speaking of crime, I think it's a crime for us not to try to do something to eliminate unemployment in the city. It's a crime that some senior citizens have trouble buying their prescriptions every month. It's a crime that some people have to turn their heat down because they can't afford a heating bill. That's a crime. So when you talk about crime, I think you need to look at the broad spectrum. I think it's a crime that Portsmouth has the lowest per capita income in the region. That's a crime. So I think it would be a crime for this council to sit idle and say, "We don't want that. We don't want to entertain that because there's gonna be some problems." Well, folks, there are a lot of problems all over. Everything from candy bars to credit cards and a lot of stuff in between. So that's why I'm gonna vote for it. And I don't... I respect those that offer a case for not doing it. But we gotta do things to help offset our position financially in this city. So that's why I'm voting for it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I pretty much stated my case last night, but to Mr. Moody's point, first, I fully understand and respect my good friend, Dr. Edmonds's position. But I will be voting for this. Mr. Moody and Ms. Simmons laid it out very well. And we... but we're going into this, pushing this with our eyes wide open. We've read... we've seen the studies, both sides. You know, you can crave a study, but we've also visited locations ourselves as individuals. And this is an opportunity. Those good ideas, those other ideas out there, they just haven't come to us. And with the eels that we face in Portsmouth financially and the revenue that this capacity bring to us, I just cannot not take a shot at this. Tolls are here, so don't ask me how you come around to this when you weren't there at one time. Well, tolls weren't imminent at that time. Now they are. And I don't know another way or another idea right now that anyone's brought to the table that could help us combat them or mitigate them. And this will help us do that and take care of some other things. We got a $195 million OPEB bid we gotta try to pay. We got a $29 million bridge we gotta try to replace. And not only that, you know, to continue to support our schools and everything else. We're trying to find answers here. And if this is a way to do it, a possibility, then I think we deserve it to give the citizens that opportunity to try to combat some of these things. And yeah, we've talked about all those things, toll mitigations, lowering tax rates, and paying some other bills we know we have coming. So for that reason, among others, I'm gonna support this resolution and work with my colleagues to try to make it happen in Richmond. Yeah, we know it's gonna be the uphill fight, but nobody said it was gonna be easy. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk? There's a motion and a second, and we're ready to vote.
There's a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted for three. There's no additional business to come before council this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Good night.